Could you share your power of that we can read it so it can be read down?
Otherwise we're burying my
Well, I can, yeah, if you share it for us, she can have it read.
And then I would test it for
Those are, they're whiteboard. No, it's a brilliant idea. Yeah, whiteboard thing is really good.
I'm just like worried.
Obviously you didn't have a child with attention issues. Because you don't do that many children.
Nice to meet you.
I saw her up for this year.
No, we can talk about that.
Thank you guys for your service. No problem.
We're not even gonna go there right now.
Still none.
Oh my god.
I get yelled at.
So, I have a high school central.
Alright.
It's amazing what happens.
Now, to be sure that they both talk to each other more.
I have, I have. My team marks.
That's quite impressive. I would be very interested in that.
Watch quite a big people.
That's the one you can see from here.
Successfully do. What a lure.
I was gonna think, good district, we have a work ethic, but my daughter she's been doing this speech even if she has one word in her mind. I always said we want to work specifically to break that, I mean, I think it's over by some.
I guess, because naturally, they will go for each. And even if the person isn't, they don't talk to them.
If they have, obviously have someone who's assigned. But development is still.
Right, okay.
So, for people who didn't see that.
Let's see, that's, that's the deciding. It's all fine, no hassle. Only if it doesn't rain. Yeah, it floods all the time. And they have issues.
They were supposed to fix it because I live in the
Yeah, they were supposed to. I don't think they have.
That's why flooding my basement.
They were supposed to.
And my mother, I don't know my property. They don't understand, they don't know what to do. So, I told them to write all the information, the comments, and so on. I mean, it's not traffic. I just apparently don't have a whole business, like, I don't see what I have to do, and my friend thinks it's too big. The business district did it for a day here. It's like, they were like, and we're all, he's going to be supporting it. They came forward to say, we can act on action in central because there's no money in the budget. He called me, they came forward to think, and I don't know. They're reading this flooding yard.
Some places I've been no, we haven't. In fact, I was driving downtown. Thank you. So, driving on Canal Street, I literally saw a giant following me for a sudden. They come over, they're about, pretty close by. Well, I saw a bunker already. Oh, yeah. Awesome, you're going to go over there. You'll go over like, where it's not sure. Incredible. We're tornadoes. I'm not a I'm not a We're in the movies.
Yes, but there was a crisis on, um, on the side of my room. But then I moved this, but like, five.
Good, how are you?
No, it's actually it'll be sitting on the floor. The other thing, after some weeks, I kind of leave it there. It's
Showing my kids. Most corrupt.
Also, it's there, do you hear the donation?
Yeah.
But around here, and you know but you're by your six.
I wish for you.
Log it. Some days, it's pretty much like, I mean, if they, if they don't, don't need to log it, we don't have to don't log it.
Why don't we do it so that, um, they all kind of say the title, and then we just do it in order, like, day to day, or week to week, or something like that? Probably great.
Thank you, Mary, sir. I see you're, um, probably.
Yeah, if David doesn't show up, you guys in town, are you good to do this?
Yes.
I think so. So, you mean, the first slide, if you're saying, remember when you get to this slide with the quote, you want to talk about, about respect? And what, what you wanted, what the school would be like for you, creating your job skills? These guys have worked hard. Ben, you look very nice. Very well represented.
Uh, now, for establishing a role, can I just start? How do you like? Connor?
Oh, yeah.
So, when it comes to that part.
So, if David doesn't show up, uh, you guys probably had an idea for a few slides.
No, specifically, we'll go in like grade level, so we'll be probably, if David needs to speak first, then just sort of
So, you, you know what?
Oh. So, are you speaking with us? I'm assuming so. So, if you do, then.
Run, he doesn't appear to be here, so it's on the hearing, we're just being sure that you have a plan.
Yes, I mean, I do. So, you would take over, um, David then?
Okay, that's not a problem.
Good.
Alright, so you guys just gotta go, you guys can each take, take turns on these slides.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Sharon. No problem, it's really great.
Oh, wait a second. I just, I made sure David will be playing.
Alright, thank you very much.
Okay, good.
I can guarantee it, but on the schedule.
I'm watching for my turkeys.
Yeah, because, because it's getting closer, I want to see if it's done. Say a couple of traps if we got dinner, right?
Well, I'm very impressed with ability to be 16, that's hard to say.
Really, I'm, they're quite a family, I think we've got a couple of families. But it's really, it's really funny to watch them. I was up there on David, I'm just saying, I love these. We got extra visitors. See, they're like, they're always, they're never far away.
Right.
I'm fine. I probably have to ask them, come and answer the whole bag.
You're gonna die. Everyone. Every car alive has to see.
You're looking, changing.
It's, it's really something, yeah. You can't use a gun, Grand City Home is.
That's right. The only thing is, we haven't seen quite deer like that.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Yeah, so.
And some say it was a beautiful part, really, because nobody actually saw the head. So, remains to be seen, I don't know.
Somebody's gonna dress up for Halloween.
Real good. Alright. Yes.
Don't have a gavel tonight.
Sorry about that.
Let me, uh, call to order the meeting of the Founders Academy Board of Trustees for October 24th. Uh, let me begin the meeting with the first item on our agenda, which is our pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the law of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing and join me for a moment of silence. Thank you very much, please concede. Um, let me, let's begin as we always do with the reading of our mission statement. And our mission statement reads, the Founders Academy is a public chartered school encompassing grades six to 12 that is free and open to all New Hampshire students. The academy develops leaders who understand and apply the lessons of the past, demonstrate exceptional character, and lead by example. The academy recognizes the importance of balance in the development of a whole person and respects each student's journey. Principal leadership is fostered by means of a curriculum of classical studies that includes analyzing the lives of great men and women of history, minding the rich classical ideals of the Western tradition, and tracing the evolution of the precious and costly idea of liberty. The next item on our agenda is the public comments section of our agenda. And before we take public comments, let me read the relevant sections of our policy BEDB that deals with, uh, public participation. Uh, in order for, to show the persons who wish to appear for the board may be heard, and at the same time, they conduct its meetings properly unofficially, the board adopts this policy, the following procedures and rules pertaining to public participation at board meetings. The first 10 minutes will be set aside for citizens to address the board. This period may be extended by a majority vote of the board. Speakers will be allotted five minutes per person. Members of the public may offer comments on agenda items only. The board will not entertain comments on items that do not appear on the agenda. Requests to address the board on matters not on the agenda must be presented to the dean and must set forth as specifics of the subject to be addressed. When appropriate, the board may place such requests on a future agenda, on the agenda. Consistent with RSA 91A3, policy BEDB, and the laws pertaining to student and family privacy rights, the board will not place any matter on a public agenda that's to be properly discussed in a non-public session. Complaints regarding individual employees, personnel, or students will be directed to the director in accordance with policies KE and KDB. All speakers are to conduct themselves in a civil manner. Obscene, libelous, defamatory, or violent statements will be considered out of order and will not be tolerated. The board chair may terminate the speaker's privilege of address if the speaker does not follow this rule of order. Uh, persons appearing before the board are reminded that members of the board are without authority to act independently as individuals in official matters. Thus, questions may be directed to individual board members, but answers must be deferred pending consideration by the full board. With that policy in mind, I have a list of folks that have signed up for public comments, and the first person is, uh, Ms. Patrice Benard.
Good evening, Ms. Patrice Benard. Here to have a 11th grader. I'm gonna try to do this, uh, when I say paper. So, I'm looking at your agenda tonight. Um, on your treasurer's report, um, I would like to know, when was the finance committee meeting? I didn't see it posted, and so, please bear with me, as I would have asked these questions during finance, but there was no committee meeting that I saw. So, there is a note on the, they have, she has notes here on the, as explanations, if I can get to it, I believe it is. It says, no grants have been found or applied for. Do we have someone who actually writes grants? I'd like to know that. Fundraisers haven't started, wow, we're really behind, oh, so I hope air's starting soon. Uh, the one thing, the question, the biggest question I have is here on note number three. It says, the school has consolidated the schedule to reflect enrollments. What schedule, and what exactly does that mean? Uh, that's my question on that. So, if you could, um, have a finance committee meeting for us, and then we could discuss that, that would be great. On the dean's report, I noticed that we have a presentation now on round table templates. However, that's a matter of curriculum and should have been addressed by a curriculum committee. And the curriculum committee, when did they meet? I didn't see it posted on a calendar. Again, I'd like to see that, um, because now we have not had parental input. And here's the deal about charter schools. Charter schools were supposed to have less regulation by the state in exchange for more parental involvement. And you don't seem to be doing that. So, I'd like to see those committee minutes, those committee meeting minutes, I'd like to see those committee meetings posted. Under the faculty report, uh, nope, nothing there, let's see. Um, we're supposed to be having, under new business, a discussion on a five year outlook. I think that might be premature, considering the fact that the charter has not been renewed yet. Shouldn't we be more concerned about charter renewal? Will the charter be renewed? Will it be renewed for, um, both middle school and high school, which be just renewed for middle school, or will the charter be revoked? So, I think maybe that might be a little bit premature. As I go over these, um, committee meetings, not being posted, I just want to remind you what chapter 91A, state's right to know law. Chapter 91A, section seven, says violations. Any person who agree by this, a violation of this chapter, may petition superior court for injunctive relief. In order to satisfy the purposes of this chapter, the court shall give proceedings under this chapter high priority on the court calendar. The petition shall be deemed sufficient if it states facts constituting a violation of this chapter, and may be filed back with the petitioner or his or her counsel, with the clerk of the court, or with any justice thereof. Section 91A, eight, section eight, remedies. If any public body, or public agency, or officer, employee, or any official thereof, that include trustees, violates any provisions of this chapter, such public body or public agency shall be liable for reasonable attorney fees and costs incurred in a lawsuit under this chapter. It also goes on to say, da-da-da, under section four, if the court finds that an officer, employee, or other official of a public body or public agency has violated any provision of this chapter in bad faith, the court shall impose against such person, a civil penalty of not less than $250 and not more than $2,000. So, a reminder, you are each individually responsible under this law. You are happy, if I do share every responsibility to the taxpayers. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Benard, for your comments. Um, there are no other individuals who have signed up to speak on the public part of the agenda, and so we will move on to the next item on our agenda, which is the secretary of court. And it is the September 19, 2018 meeting minutes. I'm sure that those minutes are missed, but I'm gonna solve them online. Do you have a chance to get those minutes? Is there a motion to approve those minutes of September 23rd, uh, September 19, 2018? Shall move. Move by Matt, it's up to him. Uh, any discussion? All in favor of say aye. Any opposed? Any standing? There's five today, extends five, zero, zero, to approve those minutes. Any other business under the secretary's report? No. Treasurer's report was submitted in writing, because our treasurer is not here. Um, does anybody have any questions about the report? And if, is there a motion to approve the report? Shall move. Motion to approve the report as submitted, is for a second? Second by Christie. Any discussion? All in favor of say aye? Any opposed? Standing? Five, zero, zero, to approve the treasurer's report. Uh, next, I, I'm sorry. Move an item on the agenda up a little bit. Yes. Here. Um, so, uh, and item number seven on our agenda is board business, and it's the social media presentation, is what we've highlighted on our agenda. Um, for the convenience of our guest who's gonna make this presentation, I'd like to move that up on the board, uh, move that up on our agenda to deal with that right now. And so. Generally speaking, it's a shared priority to reorder the agenda. Um, so with that, Tim, you wanna show, come forward? I can do that. Um, let me also offer a little bit of background. Um, I had the opportunity to see a presentation by, uh, Tim on social media and, um, some of the negative aspects of it, and ways that it gets misused, and, uh, here's an opportunity to kind of learn a lot about how it affects kids. And so, I wanted, um, the board to have the benefit of some of that information, with a possible view towards, um, later presentations to faculty about techniques and methods to help kids through these situations and all that. And so, that's the genesis of this discussion, and if we take any direction you'd like to, once we get going. You need a second? Are you still? I just gotta plug one here real quick. Okay, take your time. Take your time. So, feel, feel free. Do you wanna do the dean's report while he's plugging in?
Absolutely, Mr. Chairman. Thank you very much, I appreciate it. Thank you again, all of you. Uh, I know these volunteer positions in honor, volunteering this evening tonight to come in, and so I want to thank you for your service circling to our school, and all that you do behind the scenes that many people are going to realize for our school. So, thank you all. The close of quarter one is coming up next week. Hard to believe, but the year is almost a quarter over. Uh, that ends on November 1st. Parent-teacher conferences then are scheduled for all day on November 2nd. The sign up video for parents to sign up online is between October 19th and October 30th. So, a reminder to parents, the link was in my newsletter last Friday, to sign up. Also, if there isn't a slot to sign up to the teacher you'd like to see, or you can't make it on that day, or at those times, please, I encourage parents and teachers alike to meet at other times that are available, so that is an option. And I have it in on November 2nd. With the close of quarter one, comes a couple of things that we do here. First of all, there's the filing of grades, so we can get the report card ready for the first quarter, but there's also quarterly mastery, as well as character grading, and Student Services is taking a huge role on this year. And so, with that comes both of those items. My item two is from Student Services, actually. Ms. Stewart, who is the Director of Student Affairs and oversees Student Services, so that is our school counselor, that's also our registrar. She's done a phenomenal job, and in fact, wrote a report, uh, far latier than just a few lines, which is fantastic, demonstrates all the more, all the great things that are coming from that department. So, that full report of hers is attached to my report, reminding all of you that my report is always online and archived, so I'm sure you'd find that length. But just to highlight a couple of things from her report, Ms. Stewart, and that is that establishment of a national honor society has occurred. The completion of becoming an NCAA approved high school has occurred, and also Student Services is putting together a technical and trade career fair very soon. Those are just some of the highlights of her full report, which I encourage each and every one of you to take a every one of you to take a look at this evening. Great stuff. From the Director of Student Faculty, excuse me, from Director of Faculty, no student, just faculty, that is Mrs. Hayes, also done a fantastic job as an administrator. Especially today, just to go off script, we have PSATs and the like, and that involves an incredible amount of coordinating on the day of exam, as well as some background work to order the exams, to get them here and so forth, to schedule the teachers, to schedule the buses, to schedule the early dismissals, inform the students. Mrs. Hayes has done phenomenal there. She says in her report, inserted in mine, this year, teachers will be participating in a year-long study. They'll be reading T-20 Champion Two Point O and having various discussions in small groups throughout the year. This book was recommended by various teachers and is popular in the education field. Also want to point out, we have a professional development day this Friday, and Mrs. Hayes is also very instrumental in organizing and coordinating all of the various things that happen, a very important time for our teachers, so I want to thank her for all of that. Number four, item four on my list, is the roundtable template, and this involves a presentation with a guest speaker from the audience, namely Mr. Klein this evening. So I'm going to skip that item, and then if I could reserve time after Mr. McMahon's presentation, I'd appreciate that.
Excellent.
Thank you. PSATs, as I mentioned, eight and nine, and PSAT-N-M-S-Q-T, standing for National Merit Scholarship Qualifying Test, took place today and administered for grades nine and eleven. We have two Teachers of the Month already for September. It was Mr. Wheatley, who I think is here this evening, yes, joining us for the first time this year at Founder's and has done a phenomenal job. For a new teacher to be Teacher of the Month in September, that says a lot in and of itself. But I will say, he stepped up immediately to assist in advising the Student Senate and is so focused on his classes and the students, it's just remarkable what you have contributed here so far these past two months, so thank you, Mr. Wheatley. For October, our Teacher of the Month is Mrs. Gilembus. Many of you may know her as Miss Scandalberry, but now she is Mrs. Gilembus, a science teacher who's been with us now for three years. She was the chairman of the MAPS Science Department, this year now to the chair of only the Science Department. And she was specifically recognized this month because our theme of the year is entrepreneurship, and we're always looking for various ways coming from the students and the teachers to develop these themes. She's taken the bull by the horns really on this, and has already brought in two guest speakers from a small business bureau and women in business organization and held assemblies. And her quote, in the write-up that I wrote for her for the October Teacher of the Month will be in this Friday's newsletter, she said, quote-unquote, "I'm kinda taking this theme personal," or something to that effect, and so we really appreciate her taking this theme of the month and letting with it, quite impressive. Volunteer of the Month for October, our Volunteer of the Month is here this evening, that's Mrs. Tanya Panara, who's in the back there. Tanya donated a plethora, I don't always use that word in my report, but I'm using it here, of supplies, one day unexpectedly, plastic silverware, office supplies, expo markers, backpacks, it was unbelievable, it was like Christmas at our school out of nowhere, and did a fantastic job. She's very active with PTSA, in fact, she was at the Fall Festival and was always at meetings and events. In addition to all of that, she's organizing, really, almost single-handedly, a raffle, more on that to come, to encourage more donations of supplies and the most needed items that we want for our school. If you donate an item, you'll get a raffle ticket, you put the raffle ticket in, and when this drive is over, shake it up, and you will win a prize provided by Ms. Canara. Can't thank her enough. Volunteer of the Month, October. Open house this past Monday night, uh, excuse me, no, Wednesday, Wednesday night, was the first admissions information open house of the school year. Very exciting. First, I want to thank all of the teachers, the parents, the PTSA, the administrators, and the student ushers who came that evening and treated our thirty-five families worth of guests to a very informative evening, learning about our school, demonstrating a music class, a history class, and an experiment in the Science Lab. So, a very successful first open house of the new school year. As you know, our marketing budget is pretty much at a zero, so this was done by word-of-mouth and some trips we had made and outreach that we have done, and it was very well done, very well attended. My item number nine has been an interesting point this year and every year, but I think this year more in particular, and that is Manchester Bus Transportation, and I just want to address this to some degree. This school uses the Manchester Transit Authority for eight buses to transport only Manchester students, of which it's our largest population geographic to the school. Now, this puts us, and really every school, in a tricky situation because we are essentially a liaison between the bus company, our school, our students, our parents. We don't control the bus. Manchester controls the bus. And this year, the Bus Department has done various changes, which results in various revisions that are frequent to bus schedules, times, stops, requests for a change of stop, requests for a change of bus, and so forth. It's been, I'm gonna first of all thank everybody for their patience in this matter, this ordeal, because it has been very taxing on our students, on our parents who are waiting and the bus doesn't come, or the driver didn't get the message, I mean, the scenarios are endless, and we're in a position of really just being a messenger, and we're trying to keep up with these messages back and forth as best we are able, with a very limited staff. So, my point in putting this in my Dean's Report is twofold. First of all, to thank everyone for their patience with us, with the Manchester Transit Authority, as we navigate the changes that they make for us to relate, and then also just to keep all of you aware of a relatively large topic for administration that doesn't always get a headline. I'd like to thank numerous people today, really, I could make a whole page worth of thank yous, it's hard to do it in just a few sentences, but first, I want to thank Mrs. Elizabeth Sandville, who's here tonight, for donating a hundred cushion chairs for the Lord Cath, of which we are all on one, so thank you for that. I also want to thank Thomas Voight and the PTSA for the fundraising, and the fundraising committee for the Fall Festival last Friday, which was extraordinarily attended and a lot of good time. Mr. Best, the winning pumpkin, so thank you for volunteering your evening.
Oh, it's a pretty easy job.
I want to thank Lori DePietro, once again, unbelievable, putting on not one but two Halloween dances this Friday night. Middle School at three-thirty, by request, it was requested that the middle school and the high school dances be separate, and she accommodated that. It's a tremendous amount of work. Three-thirty is the middle school, six-thirty is the high school. I encourage all students to go, and I always make it a point too, to encourage all students to thank our volunteers, especially at these dances, who give up their time, both have been dancing behind the scenes to provide what is a very popular event and has been in the past for our students. I also would like to thank, it's not in my report, but for our annual fund, which we're selling calendar raffle tickets right now, and I want to thank those students and parents who have purchased some already, we've made over a thousand dollars. Part of the annual fund we get every year that goes somewhat unnoticed are matching funds, and I want to thank those parents that essentially utilize their company's matching fund programs, you make a donation, it's matched by your corporation, several corporations do it, and inevitably, I get a call probably once every school year where a parent says, "Oh my goodness, I didn't know my company did this, and yet, you know, this is available to me, if I donate some, my company will donate as well." So I want to thank that group of parents that remembers us every year and utilizes that program from their business. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna complete my report until Mr. McMahon finishes, and I'm gonna go back to my item four and recognize Mr. Klein. Thank you.
Thank you for your report. I want to make sure that the board has a chance to also thank and applaud some of the people that you've mentioned in your report for their various contributions, and it's Lori DePietro and Thomas Voight and Elizabeth Sandville, Tanya Canara, Mrs. Columbus, Ms. Wheatley, and the reports from Mrs. Hayes and Mrs. Stewart. All of those are great to have, and great to have their contributions from the people that are providing these reports, but also the volunteer and the teacher and all the things that we have going on from volunteers. I want to applaud them, and I hope everybody's. I did attend the Fall Festival, probably was very, very good. I also wanted to comment, you mentioned the open house that you had on October twenty-second, I believe you have another one on the calendar.
That would be November the eighth.
Excellent, so I wanted to make sure that that was mentioned for anyone that's interested. And also to comment and expand on your comment about the annual fund and people using matching funds, one of the things that I do through my work is, my work has United Way payroll deductions, and the United Way payroll deductions can be directed to any charitable organization you like, so mine are directed to the Founder's Academy. And anybody else that has United Way deductions through work can take that same advantage, you can take whatever amount you want per week to be taken out of your check, and it all gets bundled together for Founder's Academy, it's a real easy way to give. Does anyone else have any comments or questions about the Dean's Report? I know we're gonna reserve a couple of minutes for after Tim, but I want to let anybody have a minute to comment. Seeing none? Tim, you all plugged in?
Yeah, man.
Excellent. Can you turn the lights for you?
Sure.
Are you gonna turn the lights for him?
Yeah, man, it's fine, it's pretty, it's pretty bright.
Whatever you want, turn it off, or we're only a bit. We won't.
Okay, I feel really bad.
All right. My name's Tim DePan. I've been quite as much up and on the, giving you a month-long commitment, you can see, I've been the, well, founding members of the Glory Club, St. Dolly Roadie Club, based in Nashland, which is kinda like I'm speaking to Merrick Glory Club with Bob and Marine. I've been the head wrestling coach at Merrick High School for about ten years, so I've been coaching wrestling for about fifteen years altogether. Used to be a special ed teacher, working with an average student at Merrick High School for four years, and prior to that, I was a teacher at Dorchester High School in Mass. And in my spare time, I've also, I founded a social media management firm, agency in that in Merrimack, helping companies utilize social media to develop their, develop their businesses, improve their sales, that sort of thing. And most recently, I started speaking about social media, but not in the way that I think most of my counterparts, most of my colleagues would think I'd be talking about social media because as someone who has worked with hundreds of businesses over the last probably ten years in the world of social media, usually when people think I'm going to speak to them about Facebook, they think I'm gonna come in and tell them why Facebook is so great, why it's the greatest invention since sliced bread, you can make millions of dollars on Facebook, on YouTube, on Twitter, and Snapchat, and all these great things, and I'll be honest, there is a really positive side to social media, there are benefits, there are great things you can do, there are ways to change the world. But to be really honest, if you could read this slide entirely, because it doesn't quite show up, I hate social media. So on my computer, it says, "I hate social media." Here it says, "Social media." So, I actually have developed a true hatred for social media, and most of it has come because of my experience as a teacher and as a coach. And I think you're sitting here as parents, as teachers, as students, you probably know what I'm gonna talk about, right? You know the bad side of social media, you probably see it all the time. Social media truly brings out the worst in us sometimes, doesn't it? It's amazing the things we're willing to say and do on Facebook that we would never say and do in the real world, we would never say these things to someone's face, and yet somehow, we are willing to do this on Facebook or on Twitter. It's, it really is mind-blowing when I, when I see how people, and I'm not just talking about kids, by the way, I'm not talking about fourteen-year-olds and thirteen-year-olds, I'm talking about twenty-one-year-olds, I'm talking about thirty-four-year-olds, I'm talking about my grandparents' age, my grandparents' age. So this is not just a, oh, it's those kids, when they grow up, they'll learn how to use it. It's truly all of us. Social media takes advantage of our inherent lack of impulse control. Right? I mean, when you're mad at something, when you have a bad day, when something happens to you that frustrates you, before social media, before the internet, you would, and not everyone remembers before the internet, but before the internet, you would go home, you know, you might get angry, you might have to go for a run to kind of get out that frustration, maybe you tell your wife, your friends, but you kind of relax. Eventually, you let it, you let, you get over it. Whatever that frustration was, by the next day, it's done, hopefully someone told you, "Hey, don't react, just let it go." But social media kind of almost encourages us to react instantaneously because it rewards us for acting impulsively. Right? I have sleep bad happen to me, and I go on Facebook, I post about it, and what do other people do? They like it, they comment on it, they share it, they tell you, "Yeah, man, fight the power," or whatever it is you're trying to fight, you know, or they, or they give you a thumbs down, or a thumbs up, or a heart emoji, or any emoji. I don't know why emojis came to be a thing, but now we use emojis to communicate. And of course, it's an easy, easy, easy way to spread hatred. And again, see it every day, see it on all of the, the online groups for every town in New Hampshire, and anywhere else really, I think every town has their own little Facebook group, where they all just complain about everything they hate in that town, right? To me, and some it's legit, and most it's not, and then someone says, "I hate this," and someone else says, "Yeah, I hate that too, but that guy doesn't even live in the town," and yet they're still saying they hate it because it's fun to hate other things people hate. But this is what social media does to us, right? So I think I have a really good reason to hate social media, even though I'm trying not to be hateful. Again, that says I hate it. I am a father, I have two, I have two young kids, I have a four-year-old and a seven-year-old. Thank God, they don't really know what social media is yet, you know, they don't know what Facebook is. They do know what Snapchat is, which is weird, but it's because my sister-in-law makes all the weird pictures and all the filters, and, you know, it's, it's, it's one of those views, but I can see where it's going, right? I can see what's gonna happen in just a few years. My seven-year-old daughter, you know, right now, she goes to school and, you know, seven-year-old girls, seven-year-old boys, they, they have fights, they argue, you know, they're your best friend one day, they're not your best friend the next day. But what does that look like when you bring in social media, when you bring in Snapchat, when you bring in Facebook and Instagram? What does that look like, those fights? Well, the problem is, those fights don't end at school. Those fights don't last just one day. Those fights last for weeks, if not longer. Because now, she has a fight at school, let's just say five years from now, and instead of coming home and being able to get away from that fight, being able to get, being able to get away from that problem, it follows her everywhere. And she doesn't know that's gonna happen here. But I'll tell you, Facebook and all these other sites are not going anywhere, you know, it's like Google, right? It's, it's still gonna be here in five years. She's still gonna have to deal with that. And somehow, whether it's myself, or her teachers, or her friends, someone's gonna have to teach her how, how to manage these problems. Because for the, for the, for the younger children in the room here, you know how to fix you, you know how to fix your friends, you know the negativity that's spread all the time, that you, that none of us in the room, none of us who are over the age of twenty-five had to deal with growing up. This is a example of what's called the Instagram illusion. Anybody's ever used Instagram, it's like a photo app that allows you to take a picture and then put filters on it, put these really cool, pretty-looking filters that make things look better than they really are. But what happens is that the way teens are using it today is that they are using it to kind of hide behind their phone, so using it to say, "My life is so great, look how wonderful this is because I put this filter on." A girl I know says there's a filter called the pretty filter, I don't think it's actually called that, but essentially, you can take a picture, you add this filter, it makes you look skinnier. And that's a thing, that there is an app or a filter on this app that people will use to make themselves look prettier, and then they post that, even if their lives are not as pretty as they want you to think they are. We all know about cyberbullying. I don't need to go into a long discussion about what cyberbullying is, but I would say this, nobody under the, over the age of, maybe twenty-eight in this room, or twenty-five, ever had to deal with cyberbullying. When I was in middle school in Merrimack, in sixth grade, I got bullied all the time. There was one kid, and it was, I have very, had a limited recollection of it, I remember crying a lot, I remember he was ten times my size, as far as I can recall, and I remember I cried so much that my parents finally said, "You need to leave the school, we need to bring you somewhere else," and they, I ended up going to Dairy Field School in Manchester for two years, and it was just to get away from that. And then, after a period, I actually, I came back to Merrimack High School, but I often wonder, what that would have looked like today? I didn't have to deal with that kid, that new person, that bully, when I went home, I cried, I was upset, and I never had to see him or deal with him, but man, what would that be like today? He could have followed me, even if I had changed schools, he could have still bullied me. I never saw him again after sixth grade. What would that be like today? And sadly, we know what's happening today. What's happening today is we're seeing incredible increases in the rates of depression and anxiety among teens, among girls, and boys alike. These are some stats from an article in Time Magazine, that thirty percent of girls and twenty percent of boys have had an anxiety disorder. There's something very wrong with those statistics. Our kids should not be as sad and anxious as they are, and I'm not saying it's entirely the fault of social media, there's obviously a lot of other factors that come into play, but there is a correlation to the rise of smartphones and social media. And in fact, you can see the numbers, since two thousand and five... Since 2005, look at the increase in how kids are using, kids and adults are using social media. Okay? Not surprising, yep. Facebook shows up right around here, okay? Smartphones show up right around here, first iPhone, right around there. And obviously, usage goes up. You know what else goes up? The rate of teen suicide. During that same timeframe, you are seeing a 70% increase in teen suicide. Again, hard to see what the weight's projecting, but that is the number of suicides per year. And this really shows it, right? Then here, we kind of hit bottom. We're, we're, things were going downhill. And then all of a sudden, again, coinciding with the advent of tools like Facebook, smartphones, suddenly the rate of teen suicide starts to go back up. Again, I'm not saying it's entirely Facebook's fault. It's not entirely Apple's fault. But how can you not look at the numbers and go, man, something is going on? And I, I wish, you know, there's a magic pill or something we can just give kids and say, oh, you know? Here we do. Just, every kid, get off Facebook, get off social media. That'll solve the problem. But it doesn't. Because just because you're not on social media, it doesn't mean other people aren't on there talking about you. Not doing things that are attacking you in some way, shape, or form, you're going to find out about it. So it's not, it's not that simple just to say, just get rid of smartphones, just get rid of Facebook. I truly think it ends, it begins and ends with us as adults. Because it's how we use it that our kids aren't mimicking. And I don't want to use up too much of your time tonight, but at times, I've noticed, again with a four and a seven-year-old, the way I use social media, the way I use my phone, has a direct...